Okay, call the meeting to order for tonight, Tuesday, December 11th, 2018. And as we start out every meeting, read the mission statement. Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our changing world. Roll call.
Jenwyn.
Midora Champagne.
Jeff Kurt.
Paul Cochran.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Larney.
I need, okay, I don't think we have a public. Move right on to first thing, which will be a vote on a donation we've received. This is an $80 donation from the Garden Club of Norfolk for the purpose of the Freeman Kennedy Cafe. Sounds pretty cool, so we'll go with that. I don't see anything else? Any other thing to that?
No, Lisa, I think it's for the trial of different vegetables. Is that what they're doing? Yeah, sampling for students.
Making kids eat broccoli is what they're doing. So do we have a motion to accept the donation from the Garden Club of Norfolk?
I'll make a motion to accept the donation from the Garden Club of Norfolk.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for that. Appreciate that pretty much. All right. We'll move on to my portion of the evening. So as I think I mentioned to, or at least alluded to last time, either in the October meeting or the November meeting, I'm on the committee to help locate a new town administrator. So we've had one meeting thus far, we basically went through all the resumes of the lot that was submitted to us, whittled that down, and then we have interviews starting this week. We have one round this Thursday, we have a second round the following Thursday. The intent is after that, we're then able to present an unknown number of recommendations, probably two or three if I had to guess, to the selectmen for them to go from there. As way of background, I guess previously I wasn't involved in this portion, but I guess when Jack Hathaway took this position some years ago, same thing was done, a committee was formed, they presented recommendations, and the selectmen ended up picking somebody else entirely, which happened to be Jack Hathaway. So that very well could happen, so nothing will come out of my time, I suppose. Yeah. You may have a question.
So this Thursday is the first batch, or you'll see the same batch a second time next week?
We're, no, splitting the, so we've got eight, I think we've got eight names, so we've got four and four we're doing.
Okay.
So four actual face-to-face interviews. So I think there are seven, I believe, on the committee for this. It's pretty various citizens, Mike from the King Philip School Committee, Fire Chief, Police Chief, so they're on there, and a couple other folks, so a pretty good group. Got a very good selection of resumes, so I think within the eight we've determined as our finalists, from our standpoint, we should be able to come up with a decent recommendation to get to the town, so we'll see how that plays out. So that's it. I don't know if there's any other questions or...
When is Jack Hathaway's last day?
He...
He's done.
Yeah, he's gone. I think it was December 1st.
Yeah, December 1st. Third, yeah. So in the interim, the selectmen have divided responsibilities. Who is the liaison to different departments? Jim Leahan is the liaison to the schools in the interim. And then it's Cal, I don't remember the other gentleman's name.
Kevin Calcutt.
Yes.
Kevin Calcutt.
Is with the liaison to DPW and the Senior Center, I believe.
Yes, that sounds right.
Yeah.
So probably we'll have a town administrator before budget season and that. No, maybe not?
It'll be sort of a trial by fire, because they're going to be coming in right as that's warming up. Because I mean, I don't know, for instance, of the people they choose, I don't know, they all have current jobs, so I don't know, in some cases someone could have to move, so it could be two months before they're in place. I don't know how quickly the selectmen will act in terms of when our recommendation is that, so even if we get a recommendation to them the 20th, you've got the holidays, so the earliest they're probably meeting is sometime mid-January, get offers out, that type of thing.
I think they were hoping for like a...
March 1st?
Yeah, I think February 1st or March 1st, depending on whether the person has a 30 or 60-day clause.
Right.
Notice clause. And the budget season will be well underway by then, so we'll be working with the Board of Selectmen in the interim.
Okay, so that, I guess that's my question is, so Jim Leahan will be kept?
The liaison for the Board of Selectmen to us, at least for the initial phases in the budget.
Okay, so he'll be kept?
In the loop, yeah.
In the loop, yeah.
Which is very good. I mean, we have a longstanding relationship with him. He's been on the school committee in one of his 10,000 roles he's had for the town.
And Todd Lindmark, the town does have a finance director who is overseeing the budget from the town lens, so he's giving us all our budget parameters to work within, and so between the Board of Selectmen and Todd, they'll drive that process.
That's good. I just know that we have a serious spacing issue, so just want to make sure people understand how serious it is.
Yep.
So basically it adds yet another little twist of fun to the budget season that will go on. So we'll get through it.
We actually, we do have a meeting scheduled in mid-January to present the recommendations to the Board of Selectmen as far as the space, and I'll update the Budget Subcommittee later tonight, but they are in support of the project.
Okay, great.
We'll talk about that further later tonight.
Now, it's actually one of the questions, as far as like expansion here, it was one of the questions I was going to bring up in the interview, was if they've had, see if anyone's had any experience overseeing that type of project. There is a question, I think, that may get asked, is overseeing other town projects, which makes sense given what we have going on here. So that answer may be satisfactory to answer our concerns, or maybe we have to then expand upon it as a school portion of it, so we'll see.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so moving on, we have, I think it's now become a yearly request for the Norfolk Community Federal Credit Union where they do the program Saving Makes Sense. It's got to be at least a fifth or sixth time they've wanted to do this. Really, really nice program, where basically, I mean, it says it right in the letter, you see your thing here, but it's a three-week program that just goes over the very basics or introductory, information on money management, and it's just, it's a very, very nice program. It's always been well-received. I know the kids have enjoyed it, the parents have given very good feedback of it. So basically, they're asking for permission to do that again this year. So you can see the letter here, it gives a lot of background of it, but it is that it's a very nice program, so if we have a motion to accept their request to again run this program this year?
And they'd also like to, the committee, to allow them to send material home advertising the program and waive the room fee, because they're not school partners. This is a one-time, single event that they run.
I'll make a motion to accept the Norfolk Community Federal Credit Union request.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So any further questions or information on that? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so tonight we have Lisa Altham Hickey with us, the principal at the Freeman Kennedy School. She's over with her laptop there, and she's going to present the, an analysis of our second year results with the Next Generation MCAS testing, and we'll talk a little bit about the changes in accountability and scoring, and highlight some of the strengths of the district and some areas that we will continue to target as far as curriculum development work goes.
So I'm going to go over the Next Generation MCAS. Just want everyone to know that last year was the first implementation year of the Next Generation MCAS, which is a computer-based assessment for the majority of our students. However, keep in mind those students that are on IEPs or 504s may have accommodations where they would actually receive a paper copy. So in regards to that, I'm going to talk about the MCAS Scaled Score range, the types of questions that students are asked on ELA, math, and science, the test design, the MCAS 2018 Spring Scores, and the strengths and focus areas for us as a district at all the different grade levels. So the Next Generation MCAS Assessment focuses on students' ability to critically think on what they're learning and to apply their knowledge to make clear connections between reading and writing and problem-solving skills. It establishes high expectations for all students to ensure they're on track for the next grade and for college and career readiness. The majority of students, as I said, took the assessment on the computer in grades three through six, and there is a paper test available for those students on IEPs and 504s. The new standards for meeting expectations are far more rigorous than the old MCAS Assessment, and the standards for reaching the proficiency level on the legacy test were lower than what we're looking at right now. Roughly 50% of the students in Massachusetts in grades three through eighth this year are meeting expectations or above, which is really good actually at this point in time with a new test and a rigorous test as well. MCAS is only one measure of a child's growth and achievement, and I ask everyone to just keep that in the back of their mind when we're going through all of this assessment The Next Generation MCAS Assessment has four scoring categories. They have exceeding expectations, and the Scaled Score range for that is 530 to 560. A student who performed at this level exceeded grade-level expectations by demonstrating mastery of the subject matter. Meeting expectations is 500 to 530. A student who performed at this grade level met grade-level expectations and is academically on track to succeed in the current grade in this subject. Partially meeting expectations is 470 to 500. A student who performed at this level partially met grade-level expectations in this subject. The school in consultation with the student's parent slash guardian should consider whether the student needs additional academic assistance to succeed in this subject area. Not meeting expectations is a Scaled Score of 440 to 470. A student who performed at this level did not meet grade-level expectations in this subject. The school in consultation with the student's parent guardian should determine the coordinated academic assistance and/or additional instruction the student needs to succeed. The types of questions for English Language Arts. They have multiple choice questions, technology-enhanced questions, short response questions, narrative essay, and text-based essay. Some of the technology-enhanced questions for students is really drag-and-drop, being able to actually scroll down, going back and forth in pages, being able to almost use a calculator in certain math questions, so a lot of technology questions that we actually use throughout the entire school year in order to prepare students for this. ELA Test Design by Grade Level. So as you can see, in grade three, there was 15 to 21, one-point questions for multiple choice. There were two-point questions for multiple choice, there was a three to six questions. There was one short response. There was two essays which included a narrative and a text-based essay for a total of 44 points. That was mirrored in grade four, and as you see, as the grade levels get higher, you know what, there's more questions for the students, and they have more essays versus short response answers. Now I'm going to talk about grade-level data, basically each grade level and each content area. So this is English Language Arts. So in, under exceeding expectations, there was 13 students that scored a total of 12%. Meeting expectations, there was a total of 62 students at 55%. Partially meeting expectations, there was 36 students at 32%. And not meeting expectations, there was one student at 1%. 67% of Norfolk students scored in the meeting or exceeding expectations level, whereas only 52% of the state scored in the meeting and exceeding levels. The average Scaled Score for third graders in English Language Arts was 508, which is meeting expectations. And for these students, these third graders, it's the first time that they're taking a test like this, and they did amazing, so we're really proud of them and what they're able to do. Because I can feel that, you know what, there's a lot of developing that's still going on in those little third graders, especially on the technology piece of things and the gross motor development of things, so we're really proud of where we are, and we've worked hard basically to be able to get there. In grade four, we had exceeding expectations, the number of students, 13. The school was at 9%. Meeting expectations, there was eight or two students, with 61%. Partially meeting expectations was 39, for the school of 29%. Not meeting expectation was one student at 1%. 70% of the Norfolk students scored in the meeting or exceeding expectations level, whereas only 53% of the state scored in the meeting or exceeding level. The average Scaled Score for our fourth graders in ELA was 508, which is meeting expectations. In grade five, we had two students exceeding expectations, or 2% of our school. Meeting expectations was 78 students at 68%. Partially meeting was 33, at 29%, and not meeting was two, at 2%. 70% of the Norfolk students scored in meeting or exceeding expectations level, whereas only 54% of the state scored in the meeting and exceeding levels. The average Scaled Score for fifth graders was 506, which is meeting expectations. And as this test goes on, it gets much more rigorous as the kids get older. In grade six, in English Language Arts, exceeding expectations was the 16 students at 13%. Meeting expectations was 54 students at 45%. Partially meeting expectations was 47 students at 39%. And not meeting expectations was two students at 2%. 50% of Norfolk students scored in the meeting or exceeding expectation level, whereas only 50 students of the state scored at the meeting and exceeding. The average Scaled Score for our sixth graders was 506, which is meeting expectations. In 2018, we actually worked really hard with our teachers in data meetings to really do some analysis in regards to how we're doing. So we do basically a global level of how we're doing overall to school, and then at our data meetings, we really dive into saying, what are our strengths? What are our areas that we need to work on? We look for patterns and trends. Right now, we only have two years' worth of data because it's such a new test, so we're really trying to get a baseline at this point in time, and from that baseline, we're going to work, you know what, and have some focus areas that we really want to work on. But as a school, as a district, selected responses, types of questions on the Next Generation MCAS are a strength in all grades with an average of 82%. As a district, the reading, anchor, and craft structure, the strength in grades three, four, and six with an average of 81%. Another area of strength in four, five, and six with an average of 86% is the integration of knowledge and ideas. As a district, the vocabulary acquisition in the youth also appears to be a strength across all grade levels with an average of 89%. As a district, the continual area of focus for all grade levels will be answering constructive responses and essay questions. We'll also focus on the writing anchor standard. As a district, we continue to focus on typing stamina, typing on demand, and the increase of keyboarding skills in the classroom. And the other thing I think that's important to keep in mind is that we're in year two of our Lucy Culkin's Writing Implementation, and that does take time, so we're making great strides even in year two with that. The types of math questions are multiple choice questions, multiple select questions, short answer and fill-in-the-blank questions, technology-enhanced questions, and open-response questions. In mathematics, the test design in grade three, where there was 36 questions with one point, zero questions with two points, four questions with four points, there are a total of 48. In grade four, there was 34 questions of one point, two questions with two points, four with four points, with 54, and that continues across all grade levels. In mathematics, in grade three, we had 14 students in the exceeding expectations with a total of 12% for our school. We had 56 students at 50%. At meeting expectations, at partially meeting expectations, we had 38 students with a total of 34%. Not meeting expectations, four students at 4%. 62% of Norfolk students scored in the meeting or exceeding expectations level, whereas only 40% of the state scored in the meeting or exceeding level. The average Scaled Score for third graders in math was 509, which is meeting expectations. In grade four, we had 11 students at exceeding with 8%. Meeting expectations, 96 students at 73%. Partially meeting expectations was 22 students at 16%, and not meeting expectations was four at 3%. 80% of the Norfolk students scored in the meeting or exceeding expectation level, whereas only 48 of the state scored in the meeting or exceeding level. The average Scaled Score for fourth graders in math was 510, which is meeting expectations. In grade five, we had six students exceeding in math at 5%. We had 75 students at meeting expectations at 65%. We had 31 students at partially meeting expectations at 27%, and three students at 3% at not meeting expectations. 70% of Norfolk students scored in the meeting or exceeding expectations level, whereas only 46% of the state scored in the meeting or exceeding level. The average Scaled Score for fifth graders in math was 506, which is meeting expectations. In grade six, we had 21 students at exceeding expectations. We had 73 students, which is 61% at meeting expectations. We had 22 at partially meeting expectations, which is 18%, and three students not making meeting expectations, which was 3%. 79% of Norfolk students scored in the meeting or exceeding expectations level, whereas only 48% of the state scored in the meeting or exceeding. The average Scaled Score for sixth graders in math was 515, which is meeting expectations. 2018, the strengths and focus areas. As a district, selected response types of questions on the Next Generation MCAS are a strength across all grade levels with an average of 77%. In grade four, the numbers and operations and fractions standard has proven to be a strength with 81%. In grade four and five, the operations-algebraic thinking standard has proven to be a strength with an average of 75%. This is an area to work on in grade three. As a district, it's important to know basically that the standards change at grade six, too, so some of those standards, when they get higher grades, the standards are different than they are from K through 5. So there's two standards that I wanted to point out in sixth grade that they're doing really well at. Ratios and proportions is an area of strength, which was 82%, and the number system was an area of strength, was 88%. As a district, the continual area of focus for all grade levels would be answering constructive responses and short-answer questions. As I said before, we do a lot of work in our data meetings with all of our grade levels in regards to actually looking for those trends, patterns, and areas for improvement. The teachers work really hard, I think, throughout the school year, just teaching the curriculum, which they should be doing. Science and Technology. I wanted to let everybody know, at Science and Technology, this is basically, they were assessed on the Legacy MCAS, which was the old MCAS, which was a paper test MCAS, and they were actually piloting some new questions for the Next Generation MCAS. This year, students will be taking Science and Technology online, and they will be using the 2019 NGSS. All students will be assessed on that. We did do a pilot with the state, but when we pilot, you don't get the results back, but it's always good to actually practice those things. So these are the old Scaled Scores as well, it's not the new Next Generation Scores. So in Science and Technology, last year, we had 25 students in the advanced category at 22%. We had 52 students in proficient, which was 45%. We had 34 students in needs improvement, 30%, and warning, we had four students at 3%. The other thing I think is important to actually note is that this is all the science the kids have been taught through, kindergarten through grade five, so that is a lot of information actually that we're being asked students to assess, so it's a big, it's a big test. So I also wanted to let everybody know, as we get closer to the test, that, you know what, there are practice tests actually through the Pearson website that actually teachers use consistently, I would say, probably two to three months before the test. They can access practice tests and other resources to prepare students for testing, which include reference sheets for mathematics and approved ELA graphic organizers or reference sheets for students with disabilities. It's called the TestNav Student Tutorial. Those things are also available to parents at home. They do release a portion of the questions, so that you can look to see those questions as well. So those are the websites that parents can go to, and you can go to to view different types of questions at home and in school. 2018 MCAS Accountability Results. Last year, they did not have, it was our year basically to get a baseline from the state because it was a new assessment, so we didn't have any accountability results last year, so this is the first year that the Department of Education is actually coming out with new accountability results. So I think it's important to keep that in mind. This is the first year of the new accountability system, and definitely will be looking to see if any changes or refinements are necessary. 68% of Massachusetts schools are shown to be improving or better under the new system. The accountability targets for all school districts of Massachusetts, 31 categorized as meeting targets, 53% was categorized as partially meeting targets, 14% were categorized in need of focused target support, and 2% were categorized in the broad comprehensive support. So when they are looking at the accountability results, they're looking at basically three to four indicators to determine the progress towards the improved targets. They're looking at our achievement levels in ELA, math, and science. They're looking at our growth in English Language Arts and math, and they're also looking at basically our student attendance. And we actually get points for our student attendance, which we do extremely well here at Freeman Kennedy School. I am happy to say that, you know what, our school received an 86% in the progress towards meeting all targets, which is wonderful. So we did really, really well, and that's thanks to the incredible teaching staff that we have here in the Norfolk Public Schools, in both schools, at HL of D and here. I just wanted to show you two years of data and just let you know that this is what we're looking at as a baseline of how we're doing. One of the things I really like to do as we get like four and five years' worth of data, those of you that have been with me for a little while, usually do a trajectory and follow that class from third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, and sixth grade, so that we can see how they're doing. And we always see basically, you know what, a high score, fourth grade usually did a dip, and then we did a nice trajectory up. So I only have two years' worth of data, but it's nice to see, you know what, that we're doing really well in both of our years. So in 2017 and 2018, we had 7% in the exceeding expectations and 9% this year, and these are all students, so this is all students in English Language Arts. We had 56% in 2017 meeting expectations and 57% in 2018. We had 34% partially meeting expectations and then 32%, and then we had 2% and 1% of all students, which is incredible. And then in math, two years' worth of data, we had 13% of our students scored exceeding in 2017. We had 11% in 2018. We had eleven percent in 2018 in meeting expectations. We have sixty-one percent. And then 2018, we had sixty-two percent. We stayed the same in 2017, and 2018 was twenty-three percent. And we had two percent not meeting and three percent in mathematics. In science, for two years, and this is with the old legacy assessment, we had twenty-seven percent in 2017, and we had twenty-two in 2018. We had thirty-seven percent in 2017 and forty-five percent in proficient in 2018. We had thirty-two percent in 2017, and we had thirty percent that needs improvement in 2018. We had four percent in warning and failing, and then three percent in 2018. End with a quote, "Unity is a strength. When there is a teamwork and collaboration, wonderful things can be achieved." And that is, you know what, to the hard work of our teachers and our students here at Freeman Kennedy School. A lot of information and a lot of data to look at. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question, if I can go before John. Just, it's quick. The absenteeism, so you're saying that you can have students who are across the board scoring, say, the average, the average score in the school is like a five thirty-five, something like that, everybody's doing phenomenally, but if there's chronic absenteeism, the state is going to lower...
Your accountability rating.
You're going to get a poorer grade from the state than if you have more average scores, but one-hundred percent attendance.
It's not factored in as heavily as achievement, but there are other measures now that are considered as part of your accountability rating. So it's attendance, absenteeism, participation in MCAS is considered. They are, at the high school level, they're looking at graduation rates, dropout rates. So they're looking at multiple measures. It's not weighted as heavily, but it is part of the new accountability formula.
Okay.
And that is being, it's just been rolled out this year, so it is differentially impacting some districts. So you have urban districts that are having a difficult time maybe meeting their attendance targets, and so the state is gathering data and talking about refining the accountability measures based on that data from this pilot this year.
Are they tracking it at the student level?
They are not collecting it at the student, they're collecting it at the district level. And I actually, in January, I bring the school committee the district baseline and benchmark report, so I give you comparative data of how we perform with MCAS relative to our benchmark communities, school expenditure, attendance data's in there, too, so you can look at our district-level attendance and participation data.
In regards to the science, and I apologize if I don't, I don't know the answer to this. When was the last time that we looked at our science curriculum? Has that been revamped to model the new standards?
Yeah, so we did a curriculum review two years ago, yes. Two years ago, and we...
No, it was longer, it was longer than that, but the, yes, so we have a curriculum review cycle, the committee's reviewed and approved. So we did ELA most recently, and we did math. We did science about four years ago, but we have a standing science curriculum committee, and the curriculum committee for science has been making adjustments and writing units and convert, converting over to the next generation science standards. So we're in process and on track with that.
And then what do you have in place for those students who are meeting partial expectations? I know that not meeting is probably to my E P, and they're being, you know, taken care of in their own services.
So we look at that differently globally, but within the school day, we have, basically, what's called what I need time. So during that time, you know what, students actually get the opportunity to meet in small group or individually with their teachers. We also offer MCAS prep class in January and February.
For all grade levels?
Not for all grade levels, for students that we identify that actually might need that boost. So a lot of those kids, actually, that are in partially meeting expectations, they're on that bubble.
Right, 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 right.
So they're within, you know what, two or four points, basically, of meeting, and we take those kids and we work with them as well. So we do a variety of things within the school to support them.
And also, within the classroom, classroom teachers, I mean, the MCAS is measuring the effectiveness of the student progressing towards the standards. So within the classroom, we have, we do guided math models, so there's differentiated math instruction based on students' needs during the course of the day. We also have a guided reading program, so students are reading at their level. We have developmental math and developmental reading supports for students that are struggling to meet the grade level standards. So it's really a team effort between the classroom teacher and sometimes special education staff is involved, sometimes our developmental teachers, and really looking at the individual students' needs, and then developing a plan that helps them progress.
I do like the fact that you're doing more on-demand writing, because at my school, we're starting to do that, too, because it's, you're so used to doing more of a collaborative work model, that, you know, every ten minutes, they're getting feedback, or they're stopping, and they don't know how to sit for thirty minutes without anyone, because you're not allowed the prompt at all.
Right, right, right. The Chromebooks, too, in the classrooms this year, every student having their own Chromebook has really helped us, and I think we're going to see a big difference next year, because the students actually, we're not sharing all of those materials, and we're able to do, you know what, longer periods of time with any writing on demand as well.
I have another one, I'm sorry. Just so I, I want to understand, so for each student, I mean, they took the MCAS forever ago, like, so for, like, a fourth grader this year...
A legacy MCAS.
Well, no, no, they, like, just for a current student now, I mean, they take the test, what, like, in March or something like that of the prior year, and then we don't get the scores until October, November?
Yeah.
Do the current, so if it was a third grader last year or fourth, does the current teacher, when those are released, get those scores and have the opportunity to work with the student? And so then, there's a follow-up question, it's a question in two parts. The, I mean, if a student is meeting expectations in the aggregate, but there are, say, like, red flag areas within the test itself where they're underperforming relative to other scores, is that addressed, or only the students who are partially meeting are not meeting addressed?
Yeah, so what I do is, is I actually give the teachers, basically, their class results from last year, because that's the students that they really want to be able to actually see how those kids did. And then I also give the teachers the results, actually, for the year of the students that they currently have.
Right.
And within data meetings is when we really do some, you know what, deep diving and looking at, you know what, individual student scores, you know what, looking at globally questions of, you know, how we did as a group, and then addressing some of those questions as well.
But as far as individual students, too, if a child struggles...
That's more, again, this is more for, like, parents who might be watching, too, so they can understand.
Yep, so I think it's important to realize, again, that MCAS is just this one snapshot in time. So when a teacher's looking at a student's results, they're looking at the MCAS, but they're also looking at their current data, so how they're doing on their chapter test, how they're doing performing in the classroom. If a child struggled with a section of the, and they're only partially meeting in mathematics, and maybe they had trouble with the geometry section, we're also looking to see how they're responding to the current instruction and whether that's borne out in other assessments. And then we're designing interventions to meet those needs based on that. But sometimes, they just stumbled over the vocabulary error question or the way it was presented. So we look at the MCAS as one source of data, but we rely heavily also on the data that teachers are collecting daily from classroom instruction, observation, chapter tests, unit tests, writing assessments, and look at patterns of strengths and need.
Okay.
If I recall correctly, that's one of the advantages of the next generation MCAS.
The goal is to get their results back faster.
Yeah, so that they can be more current, so there's not that big lag.
Yeah, it seemed meaningful.
Also, if I recall correctly, when it was paper-based, there was only so much feedback because there was a limited set of questions.
They're still not releasing all of the questions, but yes, when it was paper-based, it was hands, the essays and everything are hand-scored, and it took a long time to get the results back. The idea of the technology and taking the test online is that they'll be able to turn it around more quickly. They still, they do have a pretty big pool of questions, but they're not releasing all of them. So when we do analysis, if a child missed a question, sometimes we can actually see what that question is and delve deep and figure out where the breakdown was. Sometimes they reserve those questions to use on. So they're not, they're, their goal is to release more questions than they have in the past, but they're still not releasing all of them.
Better or not.
Yes, it's better, but it's not a hundred percent.
Maybe right now, a third of the questions, it's not, yeah, it's not as many as you think. It's very frustrating. You're actually going to look to see, okay, you know what, everyone didn't do very well on this question, let's go read the question, let's go see the standard, let's go, and then you get to it, and you can't...
Can't see the...
Your analysis is basically just saying, this is the standard, there's a lot more that goes into it than just the standard, you know what? How do the kids interpret it? What was the vocabulary in it? How was it worded? Was it a multi-step problem?
Right.
The only data we do have in those situations is comparative data to how we did compared to the state. So some questions that are really difficult, kids struggled with universally.
Oh, so, you know, we'll have fifty percent of students get them, but the average is twenty-five percent of the students get them.
Right, right, so we do have some comparative that way.
Okay.
Great.
Questions? Thank you so much, Lisa.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The next item in your packet was for the strategic plan progress update, and I have to apologize, we have a copying issue with that, but I'll give you the general information, and then I'm going to table this to review at our January meeting. So last year, you, we worked with the strategic planning committee to develop a new three-year strategic plan for the district. Our strategic plan has four primary goals or goal areas of focus. One is around really strengthening the social-emotional health and learning, and really looking at school climate. A second goal is around strengthening curriculum and building in more personalized learning opportunities and differentiated instruction for students. We have a goal that's around professional development to support staff in meeting the demands of the other two goals. And then we have a final goal that's around developing a multi-tiered communicating, communication strategy for the district that will promote timely communication, is, we'll also be looking at whether we want to go in and consider having a social media presence or how we're getting information out to families. So there's a fourth goal around communication. The strategic plan has three phases, and what we do is, with all of the strategic initiatives in phase one, we develop a comprehensive action plan. So under the social-emotional learning environment, we have three action steps, or three strategic initiatives in phase one. One is investigating a new social-emotional learning and anti-bullying curriculum for grades three to six. We also are looking at our SAC program and after-school programs and school climate and culture issues there. And then we're also looking to do some outreach to families and figure out what people are struggling with and what supports the school can provide in terms of wraparound services. So with each strategic initiative, we have an action plan. In your packets, you should have had a copy of all eighteen action plans with a progress update, but when I gave Pam the copies, she thought I had already made copies of the eighteen plans, and she gave each of you one of them. So you only have one action step. So I will bring this back to the January meeting, but what the goal was, was just to give you an update of where we are in terms of progress. We're really moving forward with all of our objectives. I believe that we'll be on track to complete phase, most of the phase-one initiatives by the end of the school year. And when you see the action plan map, these are just all of the steps for each initiative. On the column on the right, it tells you whether we've completed the step, whether it's in progress, or whether it's something that we haven't started yet. Most of the things that haven't been started yet are not scheduled to start yet, so we have a timeline expected. So we're really on track, we're deep into the process. You probably saw the surveys that came home about the social-emotional learning program. We're analyzing that data. We've completed the math review, we're implementing the new math curriculum. But I'll go through all of the action plans when you have the full set and table that discussion till the January meeting. Okay?
Thanks.
All right. And we'll copy all of them for you, yes. The next item we have is the quarterly bullying report. This quarter, there were five discipline issues regarding bullying at the H L of Day School. All five reports were investigated by building administrators, and none of the incidents met the criteria for bullying. There were appropriate disciplinary measures taken, and plans were put in place to support students in better managing their peer and social relationships. At the Freeman Kennedy this quarter, there were four discipline issues regarding bullying. These incidents were also fully investigated. None of these led to a determination of bullying, and again, appropriate disciplinary actions were taken in all cases. Any questions on that?
Yep.
All right. That's all I have tonight. I think we're on to policy. Or King Philip.
Yes, so committee reports, inaugural King Philip report.
Yes, yes.
Looking forward to it.
The inaugural. It was an interesting experience.
You're going to actually have an audience?
What's that?
You're going to go back?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We had an audience, a passionate audience.
Didn't I mention that?
I don't remember if you did or not. I don't believe you did.
You typically do have an audience.
Yeah, which is great.
It is. I actually would urge everyone, if you have a chance at some point, to rotate in, not necessarily, obviously, to attend and vote, because that's my job, but certainly to, to see, witness what goes on there. There are a lot of passionate parents, and I think some of the feedback was, I think there's a feeling, and it's not just aimed at our town, but there's a feeling among the audience members that the committees from the individual towns neglect to think about the high schools, so that was interesting feedback to get. So what was discussed was, I'll just kind of keep it to three main topics that were discussed. They talked about the start time survey that had been done, about moving the high school start time later, and whether to move forward with the study. So they presented the survey itself, there was some discussion about it. We're going to revisit it the next meeting, which is on Monday night. I'm going to probe, I think, a little bit more about what the drivers are, because some of the other things I think that were discussed were budget concerns, and I think even as we go forward with something like this, I want to make sure that if we're going to spend money on even a survey, we should make sure that we're doing it for the right reasons, so, because I think there are a lot of considerations that go along with that type of decisions.
There definitely are. This was something that preceded the current superintendent. There was a working group that was interested in looking at start time there. There is a considerable amount of research that suggests that teenage students need, require more sleep, and that's part of what's driven the interest in looking at the later start time. There are significant budget challenges that KP would have to consider, because right now, we share buses, and so their bus routes are based on shared service, so they would have to renegotiate with Holmes, and I think Holmes would probably have to purchase additional vehicles if they weren't sharing.
That was one of the things we talked about.
So there's a budget cost to that.
And we talked about all the negotiating, negotiating that would happen with all the towns individually with the...
Right. Yes, absolutely.
And they wouldn't ask to, for us to start at the...
There would be, I think there's interest in having the elementary districts do some surveys to see whether there's interest in changing start times. I think there's, I think it's harder for a lot of elementary families to get kids out the door much earlier, but that would be something that they're interested in exploring, whether there's interest in. But you also have collective bargaining agreements and teachers' contracts that have work hours defined, so it's complicated. A lot of districts have considered the, and have actually moved forward with an earlier start time, have, with a later start time, have reversed it and gone back to earlier start times.
Oh, they have, okay.
There's been several communities around here. One of the issues that sometimes comes up is that, yeah, some families rely on their high school students to, for childcare, for their younger students, and then you also have quite a few high school students that work after school. So those are some factors that have been brought up in districts where they've gone back to the earlier start time for high school.
And I think sports, too, because if you're having meets in one town...
Sports has been an issue, but the, the, Maya has accommodated districts that have changed their start time, so that's, that's less problematic. They've worked that out for districts that have done that. I think the bigger issue for KP is the shared services, the shared buses, the cost implications, and whether there'd be interest at the elementary levels, again, with four different unions and four different collective bargaining agreements. It's a lot.
Yep, so, so we're going to vote to examine that further, or whether or not to move forward with examining that further at the next meeting. We also, they shared the results of the superintendent's union survey, and there's no interest in pursuing that further. The recommendations were that, you know, if we were starting from scratch, that they would just look at regionalizing the whole district, but that's really sort of a non-starter at this point. So I don't think there's anything to come out of that. And then they began discussing the process for getting the budget started for next year. Paul discussed the special education arrangement for next year, and trying to build that, the programs up in-house, and also looking at shared services. So I talked a little bit about our experience, our positive experience with building in-house programs and how that can positively affect the budget. I didn't take the opportunity, should have taken the opportunity, to share some of our experience with the savings from shared services, but I'll take the opportunity next time that arises. But I think that was received well, and hopefully, that will get us all moving in the right direction, but it's just, again, where I started with it, there's a lot of, I think, hurt feelings, so I think it's going to take some time to build up. And I think having Paul as a leader feels like we're going in the right direction, but it's going to take some time.
Yeah, we've been working very closely with KP, with the Joint Special Education Steering Committee, with the three elementaries, and with KP, and we had a retreat, probably And we had a retreat, probably a month and a half ago, we developed a shared vision statement for all special ed services, and we've started the conversation. So KP, we just had a meeting recently, they are hiring a consultant to look at building social-emotional programs in their middle school. And that consultant, we're all going to purchase a piece of their time to come look at the elementaries and make sure that they're, that we're dovetailing nicely with the program they're going to build. So I think there's been some really positive forward momentum in terms of better aligning services. The team, I think, as you said, there were some past challenging relationships, but I think everybody this year is very committed to, to moving that forward in a positive way, so I think we've made some growth there.
Good. That's it.
I was going to add, I talked to Mike Gee, he's like, I think I'm a general, he's on the town administrator search committee with me. So we were speaking after the meeting. A few years ago, the chairs had had a meeting schedule. I think we had, the original plan was going to be four times a year, that never happened. So I think over a two-year period, we might have met twice. And the idea was kind of along the same lines we're all speaking of, get a better working relationship, kind of going back to the, the ultimate goal of it's one district, it just happens to be four little sub-districts, if you will. And so we, we want to revive the idea, because we think that could help out for budgetary reasons. I think some of us were at the KP spring budget meeting, I think you were there last year, I don't know if you were there, Jeff.
I was there for a bit.
So obviously, there's differing interests in each, and that's always going to be the case, but the idea is hopefully if the, if the four chairs can kind of get together, maybe we can sort of be on the same page mostly, and kind of speak into what you were just speaking of. That will kind of help things go along in the future, so I'll keep everyone posted if that, A, materializes. But Mike was very interested, I told him I'm very much interested in it. I think we've got four folks that are committed to it, so it sounds like it's a, it's a good possibility for happening, so that's nice. So I'll let you know how that turns out. And then I was glad you gave the update that the superintendent union kind of fizzled out, that we had explored that one of the first years I was on the committee here, and to some, went into some length with it, just, it's really just not feasible in any way, shape, or form that we could figure out here. And that was at the point where you had like $1.98 to our names of districts, so it was some very challenging times, and we really couldn't get anything with it. I know that sort of became a bit of a movement last year in the spring, and it sounds good in theory, it's just impractical, in the application of it, we just couldn't figure out the way it works. Maybe it could work for somewhere, it doesn't seem to be.
No, I think they reckon as there wouldn't really be any savings from it at all.
So I'm glad to see that's the case. And we're glad to see they looked into it again, it's nice to see, you know, other people reach the same conclusion, so, thank you. So now we're at the policy.
It's back to me?
I was just going to say it's back to you.
Dr. Jeff, how you doing?
All right. Doing well. So we reviewed the fees and fines. We also reviewed past due tuition for pre-K, which Ingrid will share the totals with the budget subcommittee, but it's really a fairly nominal amount. So our feeling is just kind of to retain the language as is, and just keep monitoring on an ongoing basis the outstanding amounts, basically. I don't think it should have much of an impact on budget, but we'll leave that to you to make a determination, and we'll ask you to revisit with us if it becomes a challenge. So then, in terms of, the other policy was regarding online fundraising and solicitations. After consideration, we're going to recommend that both for personal, in terms of for individual teachers, and also for classrooms as a whole, that we prohibit online fundraising, crowdsourcing in general, and we'll ask legal counsel to craft some language. Our rationale for that, for the teachers, is that just in terms of conflict of interest, where there are prohibitions for how much teachers can accept, we just feel like there are some pitfalls there that could be really challenging to navigate, and we'd rather not put teachers in, in a precarious situation. And then as far as classrooms, it's a really nice idea, but we feel like we put the PTO and other organizations in a challenging situation where we might siphon off some funds, and we'd rather not put them in that situation, so that's really the rationale there.
And then we have for tonight a first reading on the meal charge policy. This is consistent with the practice that we've had for, for years in terms of if students don't have funds, they're provided with a meal. It talks about delinquent accounts and collections. It's a pretty standard policy. So we have a first reading on that for tonight. If anybody had any questions or comments on that policy. Okay. And then we had second readings on educational opportunities for children in foster care and for military children. There were no changes after the first reading, and both of these policies are heavily driven by, by legislation, so they're consistent with the new legal requirements for both. All right, so those will come forward for a vote at the next meeting.
Okay. Different policy, correct?
That's it.
All right. Move ahead to budget.
Budget. At our last meeting, we reviewed budget timeline and assumptions. We followed basically the same, same schedule as we have in previous years. At the next meeting, which is later tonight, we'll review budget requests and staffing, what are the, what's the expense impact of step and lane changes going into FY '20? And the overall schedule that we will maintain is the same as in previous years. January, we'll have a draft of the preliminary budget. February, we'll present that budget to the school committee. March will be the public hearing, and the school committee will vote to approve. April, we'll have final changes, our public presentation to school committee and advisory council. And in May, we'll have our town meeting, where we hope to have an approval and adoption of the budget. And if any revisions are needed, we'll do that in our June meeting. That's all.
All right. All right. So moving on, we have three school partner renewals. You'll see in your packet, the first is NCL, and you'll see the very many things that they provide as far as assistance for the schools, they've been a partner for a great many years now. So we have a motion to accept the renewal of NCL as a school partner.
I'll make a motion to accept NCL as a school, a renewal school partner.
Go second.
I'll second.
Further discussion on them?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to NCL for your continued support. Moving on to Norfolk Teachers Association, also same thing, a renewal. So do we have a motion to accept them as a renewed partner?
I'll make motion for, to accept the Norfolk Teacher Association as a school partner.
Second on that one?
I'll second that one.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you again, Norfolk Teachers Association, for your continued support. And the third one we have is the Norfolk Parent-Teacher Association, and again, another renewal for them.
I'll make a motion to accept the parent-teacher organization, Rena Noel, as school partner.
Okay, go second.
I'll second that one as well.
Assuming no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you to all three of those again, very much appreciate it. Then we should move forward to approve the minutes from our November 13th meeting. So we'll get a chance to look through there, if everyone has a, if, would like to put a motion forward to approve the minutes of the November 13th meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 13th school committee meeting.
Second?
I'll second.
Oh, change of pace.
I, I hit my limit.
Ooh, rock it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so then we are looking at our next meeting, January 15th, does that work for everybody?
Yep.
See everyone then.
Policy subcommittee before.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we're going to call this, or we're going to close this meeting out. Please note there'll be a motion, so we're going to move to go into executive session to comply with the provisions of the open meeting law and to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health of an individual not to reconvene in open session. This is actually a name vote survey, so do their name when they're doing this, please. So, can we start with Jen? All in favor, basically?
Aye.
No, you have to like state your name.
Oh, Jen Nguyen.
Yes, thank you.
Bedora Champagne.
Jeff Curry.
Sorry, I wasn't listening.
Paul Cochran. Thomas Doyle. Okay, thank you very much.